It is six thirty. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. Is there anyone for public input?
Yes.
All right, if I can have you come to that microphone and give me your name and address, please.
My name is Dennis Schiffler, live at ten eighty-two Sunwood Park Lane, Way Park. My concern is the streets in our, in our area. I'm voicing opinion of a few of the neighbors and you guys have been patching that Tenth Avenue South, south of Seventh and Sunwood Park Lane and Drive. I know been patching, but I'm wondering where we're on the list for improvement.
I believe you're on the list for next year, am I right, Bill? Seventh Street to Sunwood Park down that way? I think it is. Yeah, it is, it's been noted.
All right.
We talked about it.
Say the squeaky wheel.
There you go.
That's why I'm here.
That's right.
All right, that's all I've got to say.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else for public input? Anyone else? Review and approve council agenda.
Prove as noted here.
I'll second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously consent agenda item. Item A, approved new massage enterprise license for Breathe Wellness LLC. Item B, approved new massage enterprise license, Northern Oak Massage. And item C, approved twenty twenty-two liquor and tobacco license renewals.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Regular gen item A, rezoning to two oh five, two two zero, two zero zero five, Frontage Road North from B two commercial general business district to RM dash twelve moderate density multiple family residential district.
Sorry, that's a mouthful, I know.
Got that, yeah.
Council members, this request was submitted by Jim Rakshani, doing business as Globe Enterprise, Inc. They purchased that property last year. I know everyone's been asking about, that's the, the property in front of Anton's that used to have the little cabin on it and they have done some clearing and grading activities that were approved by the city at their own risk because there was no formal development plan for it, but that's a risk they assume. The intent was to prepare for later development. We did see the proposal now for the sixteen unit multifamily housing structure apartment upon the property, but that would require rezoning from the current B two district to that multifamily residential. Based on the, the size of the apartment that meets our, the RM twelve, which is the middle tier apartment, based on the density that allows up to twelve units an acre and this would come in at ten under their, their proposal. The proposed project would be, as it stands right now, six one bedroom apartments and ten two bedroom apartments with the building slated to be on the eastern side of the property and the parking lot on the western and then preliminary ponding on the potential north side. All those items would have to be gone through formally, assuming the, the building, assuming the rezoning would be approved, the building would be subject to all the, the formal review and permitting requirements. We haven't got to that stage yet because you don't want to incur that worker cost unless you know what you get to go ahead. Property has also not been platted, as that would be required prior to any permitting. Same thing applies, they won't platted until they would receive a positive rezoning. Also to avoid incurring costs. I know this, this kind of smacks of what we in the zoning and planning realm refer to as the, the spot zoning, but when you actually get into it in the state statute, the, the formal requirements to meet that, that nexus of spot zoning is that the, performing that zoning would be to the detriment of the surrounding property and essentially be treating the, the property specially. In my opinion, we don't see either of these with this. I think this is a case of me kind of having to get out of my own way. Where you see a, a lot that has a proposal that makes sense. I think if you want to put an apartment, something on this size, this is a good area for it. You have some amenities nearby, you have easy connectivity to the river and trail, you've got some retail nearby, you've got some dining establishments. I think it's a, it's a good fit for that kind of medium density. Planning commission did review this last week. We didn't have any comments or concerns received. We did get a, a letter of, a letter of support from Anton's as well. One point of discussion that had come up was with the, the flood plain nearby. Any development in that area at time of development has to be brought up above the, above the flood plain designation. That's usually accomplished by fail engineering and then they have to have a designation submitted at the time of completion that it's above that flood plain. So it'd be kind of at or near the Riverwood Mall adjacent, so it'd be a little bit higher than it is now, but we would iron that out at the, at time anything would come through for permitting. That being said, I would recommend approval of the rezoning as requested. I would note that we, if this goes forward, we would see the, the plating at some point, but it's unlikely that you would see any further requests for the, the apartment itself. So it could vary a little bit from the elevations or the plans you see here depending on how it's laid out, but this is the preliminary plan. We would expect that it would stick substantially to this.
Council, any questions for John?
Do you know what type of rental units these are going to be? Are these going to be for older income or?
Just market? Just market rate, they're not, they're not intended for any one person or another, but knowing from the applicant, who he has in his other building on Third Street Crossroad Lofts, I think the target is kind of younger professional folks that maybe aren't ready to, to put down stakes and buy a house yet. That's kind of the market he, he's stuck with in the other building from what I understand, so. But it's market rate, he can rent to anybody. I'm sorry?
Do you know what the rates he's talking about?
I don't.
And the second thing is that one time we had a moratorium on for apartment building. Moratorium, I'm assuming has been taken off.
There's nothing in place now, I don't know that there's.
And it'd be years ago.
Yeah, that would, that would have been before my time.
Years ago.
We don't have, we don't have a lot of property. That's eligible for, for multifamily development. This is kind of a case by case situation. I think this makes more sense in an area like this. That's, that's the reason I'm supportive of it because I think it's a sensible development in that area. You know, if you put something like this, the same development somewhere else, I, it might not have gotten my support. I, I think it's a good fit for that particular area.
Just a few questions. Any other questions, council?
Moved to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
All right. Item B, proposed assessments of unpaid charges. Hang on a second. Public hearing notice, please take notice that the Way Park City Council will hold a public hearing on the fifteenth day of November twenty twenty-one at six thirty PM or soon thereafter at the Way Park City Hall located at nineteen Thirteenth Avenue North, Way Park, Minnesota to consider the assessment of unpaid charges pursuant to Minnesota statute four two nine dot zero one one to four two nine dot one one one. The property proposed to be assessed for such improvement is as follows. I'll just give you the address, three thirty-seven thirty Fourth Avenue South, Way Park, Minnesota. The estimate assessment is five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents. A reasonable estimate of the impact of the assessment will be available at the hearing for public review. Anyone wishing to contest the assessment thereof should be in attendance at the above stated time and place and it was dated the twenty-sixth day of October twenty twenty-one. The time, public hearing is open and it is six thirty-nine. Anyone here that wants to speak to this assessment? Ooh, that was good, it turned to six forty.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Further discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed at six forty.
I'll move to approve the proposed assessment.
What are the, I'll second it just for.
Further discussion.
What are the?
What's for grass cutting and?
Grass cutting, some.
Maintenance?
Maintenance.
Any other question? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Item C, consider strategic comprehensive plan proposals. Who wants that one? John, Sean?
I'll take it, I just gotta. That item. We have had some discussions internally and as well as with the council in a work session to consider the possibility of doing strategic planning and then tying that into our comprehensive plan process. There are some things that we see as overlap into, into some of that, particularly when you are getting information and input from the public. And so what you have before you are two proposals and it's two consultants that are not related, one doing strategic planning and then the other one doing more of the comprehensive plan, working out and kind of putting together a process that would allow some of that overlap. And so the two are Permian Associates and then the other one is SEH. Both proposals have been included in here for review. The cost estimated by Permian Peterson is twenty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-five and SEH's proposed costs are estimated to be ninety-six thousand dollars for the comprehensive plan. So this would really give this city an opportunity to look long term. It'll take a lot of the impacts that we've seen over the last year moving forward with COVID, how that might have played a role in how we're future planning for the city. And so this, the recommendation from staff would be to use the ARPA funds to pay for both proposals. And I'd be, be happy to answer any questions, I can certainly go through anything more in detail. So at this point, I'm going to let it be open to you guys for comments, suggestions.
Council?
I, I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask. It's certainly a comprehensive, comprehensive planning document. My question is that as I went through the document, I counted eight different committees and advisory groups. We keep talking about we don't have enough staff to get our work done, but we're going to have eight different committees and processing groups. I'm the city internal support person. Where are we going to find the staff to do this and get our work done?
One, I don't know without going back and looking at each one of those individually. There's not eight separate little working groups that I would say. I would say that some of that stuff is overlapping and you're taking some of that from your larger group that you're looking at doing and kind of veering that off into that. We've already had conversations internally and anytime you do any strategic plan or comprehensive plan, anytime you do any of that, you are going to have staff, the staff have to be involved in that. Anytime you have a consultant, there's always going to be some staff role that's being played in that. And so we've already had that conversation. In the strategic planning side, we've talked about our community outreach specialist. This fits in very well with some of the things that she's already doing with that. And on the comprehensive plan stuff, John would be the one that would be taking the charge on some of that stuff, which he would have been doing anyway, so.
Just have questions about, we got design team, we got in staff internal planning team, comprehensive planning committees, steering committee, city management team, overall steering committee, project advisory committee and technical advisory committee. That's a lot of committees. And then we're talking about bringing the public in to do.
Your public is going to be part of those kinds of things.
Of course, more staff time we're involved with. So I'm just concerned about the amount of time that we're talking about here, not just the cost.
John, is a lot of that, is a lot of that going to be staff time or is that going to be SEH time with, with the, with the citizens and stuff?
Probably a little bit of both, but I mean largely, you know, you've got consultants that are going to lead the charge, but obviously staff input and staff.
Yeah.
Intermixed throughout the project, but certainly like you say, paying two consultants to lead the project and put the bulk of the effort into it, it's more.
It's an, for where the city is at right now, it's an important piece for us to, to look at and I think it's important for us to use moving forward. I think it helps provide us a lot of clarity and a lot of direction on the things that we're doing. There are a lot of things that this is going to answer for us. When I think of the comprehensive planning side of it, there's a lot of things that we end up really twiddling our fingers on because we're trying to figure out how we're doing that. So it's going to provide a lot of clarity for all of us and a focus. Is it work? Yeah, it is. If we weren't comfortable with doing the work, we wouldn't have brought it forward, but there are consultants that are going to be leading those, those charges as well. And so I think we have to do that. I, I think that that's, we've got to take that, their lead on some of these kinds of things, so. Yeah, I don't disagree with you on some of the work that's associated with it, but I do think there's, it's an important piece of what we've wanted to be doing for quite a while.
You know, I was involved the first time when we did the first comp plan many years ago and everything was, well, we can get help from the citizens, we can get help from the business. We tried like, how many times to get this volunteer help to come in and help? And you got very few, how are we going to do in this time and day to get these people to help engage and come to these meetings or even get people to think about coming? I mean, it, it's something I know we, we have to get done, but like Vic, I mean, there's.
I, I'm, I understand Vic's point, but in my opinion, our staff wouldn't have any input or you or me. I would rather see something be generated from the public.
That's what I'm saying.
Rather, I know what Rick's opinion is of where things should be.
I don't.
Oh, and that's the whole part I don't like and unfortunately, you're going to be questioned probably several times on your opinion too and I.
I, I think.
Wish it was all beyond that.
I think that's what these two organizations, these two consultants will do, will, it's their job to go get that public.
Right.
It's not our job to go get that public. It's SEH's and Permian and Peterson to go get these, these, these people. How they do it, I don't know, maybe they have a round of beers down at Pestis or something. I don't know how they get them there.
What if they don't get it?
Well.
Then it's going to be your opinion, my opinion.
Then it's going to come back to us, but you know, we've done everything we can to.
Then you can go ahead and decide what you're going to do at that point. I don't think that, I don't think, I think they're very confident. I've asked those same questions. We had a long discussion at the work session with both of the consultants about how they're planning and getting input and I think they did a good job of kind of detailing out their perspectives. They're up for that challenge. I think one of the best things that could come out of that is that we may get a whole different group of individuals that might have some input into it. Maybe we're wrong. I can tell you from Jay, Dave's experience working on the cop house part of that, there's a lot of other players at the table that we haven't seen. And it might just be of how we're asking them doing it. You know, if we're going to put something in the paper or we put something on our website to ask for it, you have to be strategic in some of the way that these things are getting asked and that's, they're the experts in some of that. So is it going to be work? Yes. Is it worth it? Absolutely.
They're going to ask us and, and if you know somebody or think of somebody that wants to be on there, I think Danny Schiffer should be on that committee, see, so.
Yeah. Don't leave yet.
But if.
Yeah, before you leave, give your name and address and leave it here.
That's right.
That's, that's the catch. If, if we put it in the paper, nobody's going to read it. We put it on the media, nobody's going to read it. But if I called Danny Schiffler up, Danny might say, yeah, I'm, I'd be interested in if you're going to do Sunwood Park or you're, or where we're going to put this stuff or whatever. You, you might. Right. Yeah, you, you, you might get those people if you have that personal contact instead of putting it in the paper or putting it out on social media because I don't read either, you know?
And I mean Frank, to your point.
I, I ask a lot of things, especially when I'm out door knocking and I get the same answer. You're doing a fine job or whatever it is that.
But you're not asking, you're asking somebody maybe to, to, to run for some office. Some of these different committees are going to be very structured and specific about their task of what they're going to be doing and it's for a, a period of time.
A short period of time.
This whole plan is, remember, is going to be done next year at this time if we stay on that. Now, some things can be changed, you know, depending on how quickly we get started and things like that. But the whole idea of this is, is this work has a timeframe to it. So it's, so yes, Vic, to your point, are you getting people involved? Are there different, absolutely. But are there, you know, sometimes you're more willing to take on something if there's, you know, if you know that it's this amount of time that you're doing.
I'm saying, we're not going to be here for six years.
You're not going to be here for eighteen years like Frank on a council or the mayor for thirty. Okay, I'm just using.
I don't want to be there.
Thanks, Rick.
So some people might not want a twenty-one year commitment, I get that, but I think it's important. And if we want to continue to try to be able to encourage more people to get involved and take an interest, this might be the best way to do that.
I, I think for me, the best way to do this is to do this on an incremental basis. We take steps and move forward and if we get the participants, then we move on to the next step. If we get participants, we move to the next step. But to endorse the whole thing all at one time doesn't make any sense to me.
That's my, my point is participants, that's us and staff.
Exactly.
Because they're going to ask you what you envision. If there's, if there's no one else to ask, it's still us. Or staff or, yeah, no, nothing beyond really the walls of City Hall.
Well, and for me, it, it's kind of an unrealistic kind of a plan. It's kind of a pie in the sky and I'd like to see some incremental steps being taken so that we go a little ways down and see where we're at and then we go a little ways farther and see where we're at, not to bring everything together and all of a sudden explode it all at one time. That doesn't make any sense to me.
I do think that there's some advantages. You know, if you let too much time go by, you lose the momentum of, of what you're trying to do and the questioning of what you're trying to accomplish. But if there are times in the process where one, we don't feel like we're getting the input and we need to stop and so that we can get, you know, is the timing right or we need to advocate for more individuals to be involved, however that might look, can we do that? Yeah, it's our process, we can do that, but I think you have, you know, going forward with that and knowing that as long as we continue to have the participation, then we by all means, take it while we have it. How do you know tomorrow if they're going to be here? And I do.
You don't.
And the thing, Frank, the only thing I'll say Frank, you know, related to there, there's a whole lot of value, yeah. There's a whole lot of value that we, and I think it's important, but there is a lot of value in the tenure that you have on this board as well and not to take those pieces into consideration as well as those new things, I think it needs to be incorporated evenly because you certainly want plans that are realistic. If you come forward with things that, well, we can't, you know, that was great, but we can't do half of that, well, that doesn't really help us either.
But I don't want it to be the only opinion.
I agree with that.
Or the only twenty opinions.
Absolutely.
That's the disconcerting part.
I'm counting on, I'm counting on these people to go get those citizens.
I was just going to say, that, that is one of the challenges of these complans is engaging the community and in this day and age, it's, you know, it's getting harder and easier at the same time to engage these people because you definitely have, have different ways to get ahold of them, you know? We're not just put it in the newspaper, it's, it's social media, it's knocking on doors, engaging people directly, it's the business community.
It's Zoom.
Stakeholders are fairly easy.
I see they're going to engage the schools and.
You know, they own.
You know, so it's hitting it from a number of different fronts to try to solicit that engagement, but it, it certainly is a challenge, but I think this day and age with the many different ways there are to communicate and reach out to people, that's, that's a tool that, you know, needs to be used and will be used. And then, you know, thinking of Vic's thoughts of, I mean, there is, there are oftentimes where it's done more kind of piecemeal, one step at a time, but I, I would say that there is value in doing it more holistically because it all is kind of intertwined, you know? The zoning in one spot versus the transportation network and the trail and pedestrian connectivity, you know, as you change one piece, it kind of moves the rest of it and so there is some, some value or.
Some playing off each other in components of it.
You don't want to look at one thing in a vacuum and six months later look at another thing because it might not jive, so that's, that's kind of the logic there.
And the.
I think some of the problems that even kind of Vic is expressing, I think, is letting us be more informed, more into a step by step of what's going on, rather than at the end, all of a sudden, boom, here it is, guys, vote for it.
Well.
You know, that's, that's, one of the big problems I've seen going on is at the end, boom, we get it dropped on our lap and we have to look at it in a couple of days and say yes or no, you know? So as the process is going on and different steps.
I would hope you're at every meeting there, if not participating, you're sitting in the back room.
Yes.
Because I'm going to be there counting heads to see who from the public is there.
Well, remember though too Frank, that you're, you're looking at it from the standpoint that you're expecting that every input that you're getting is going to be in person. I'm going to tell you that there might be other venues of doing that.
Okay.
And other options, that's all I'm saying is, is that in today's world, you guys, we have, there are, we have to start doing things differently. We just had this conversation with our staff. You know, when, when you're looking at staffing and things like that, what are the things that we can automate to make it easier? You know?
Good example is that Southwest Beltway that you guys just got updated on. I think they did a, you know, combination of email blasts and social media and they got, I don't know, I would say three or four hundred different responses back. Well, that was a pretty successful tool and it wasn't an in-person meeting. It was somebody that within five minutes can, you know, pick certain options and make certain comments and, you know, provide their input and value that way. So like I said, it's, I, in my mind, it's kind of trying to attack it from a number of different angles. Everybody wants to be engaged differently.
A lot of these things weren't even available in what, two thousand and five, when we did the.
No.
When the last comprehensive plan update.
I would agree, I would agree that.
Or, or if they were, they're very burgeoning and just coming out there, I think.
I would say the last time we did one of these or the first time we did one of these or whatever, we did a very, very, very poor job of.
It took.
In the citizens of Way Park to come and give us any information.
And it took us probably.
I mean, it was at that time, it was.
We didn't do anything.
And I could also.
We kind of tried, but no one wanted to come, you know, you announced, we're going to have a public meeting at seven o'clock
And who hears that?
Tuesday evening and, you know.
And look at how long it took.
That's just, it's what we know, you know, that's why we engage a consultant to help us.
That process, that took more than that. It was probably a good two years.
You know, but the whole thing, we're, we're hiring professionals to do this for us.
Great.
Real planning symbol, that's the bottom line, we're paying and hopefully we get our, our money's worth out of it.
And if we find that the, the beauty, but the other beauty of this.
The hoping part.
We, the other beauty of, of what we've done with this is that there is, if you look through the proposal with Permian Associates, if, if from a staff standpoint, if they need to do more, we, they have that built into their proposal to do those things. We've also left some funds in the general fund budget because we've had, remember, the comprehensive plan has been a part of that. That was in this last year's, this last budget, this twenty, excuse me, not last year's, twenty twenty-two's budget. Keith still wants to leave a small portion of that in there just for, for costs that might exceed what we have planned for the ARPA funds to use.
There's still money in twenty, did you say twenty twenty-one budget?
No, twenty twenty-two.
I thought there was still, I thought we only halved the twenty twenty-one budget, where it's about a hundred thousand. Then we halved it to fifty.
You know, I'd have to ask, verify what we did.
Ten out of that on something, so there's got to be, I thought forty-ish in there.
I'd have to verify that.
There could still be money from this year in there, yeah.
I don't remember.
Not that you need to go spend it, John.
Which maybe he pushed into twenty twenty-two. He may have pushed that to twenty.
We're not going to get invoiced on this.
Carried over.
I don't know that, but he might.
We're not going to get invoiced on this until twenty twenty-two.
Well, the best thing about this whole thing is we can use the ARPA funds.
Right.
Um, which won't cost the citizens anything.
Federal tax dollars.
Well, they're, yeah.
It's tax dollars.
But it doesn't come out of our.
General fund.
General fund.
And that we have to pay for this time.
So what's your wishes?
Well, my big concern is that I don't want to be sitting here and have you come back and say, we need more help here, we need more help there because we're all tied up in these committee meetings and we can't get anything done.
Well, just recognize that we are going to spend time on that this is important to do that.
I don't disagree with that.
Yeah.
I just don't want to hear, have you coming back saying, okay, I can't get this done because I got this thing going on or this done because, we're already spread thin and I'm really concerned about that. I think this is a great idea. I don't think we should be just jumping all the way to the end of it right away. I'd like to see incremental. I don't disagree with this, but I just don't want to see people coming back and say, we're overwhelmed, we can't do all of this stuff after we're into it.
Yeah, and then I think, I think we can control that timeline, right?
Sure hope so.
You know, I think that they lay it out the way that, you know, but with every good process that you have, it, you can lay out a process and it's going to, it, it's going to evolve from there. And making sure that we have the right players, if we're not getting the input that we need from who we want, we might want to take a pause and say, all right, you go back and you, you find some other resources of how you're going to engage the community because this is really supposed to be about the engagement. And remember, they, how much they've pushed and I agree with you, you know, that, that they would like to have a large number of people to be engaged, okay, well, that's not ten people. And it can't be the same ten people in this room, you know, so.
My fear.
Yep, and so if that comes to a point, that's us managing and going back and saying, no, this is not working. You need to go back and. You need to go back and engage the right people. Because if we really truly want to work on strategic planning and comprehensive planning, we need that, that from, from outside, from outside here.
Well, from what I'm seeing.
We could all have the same vision.
Good. Are you kidding?
It's possible.
I'm here yet.
But I, I, I do appreciate it because I, they're, these are real concerns. And I honestly think it's how we get into it. And I, I think we can go back and express those things to make sure that those are being addressed. That we take our time, we get it right, and we get the input that we need. That's really what.
And it goes back to Ken's statement is we, we are hiring professionals to do this. That's, that's their job.
I, I think, you know, every one of us as department heads or staff that'll have a role in this, I think we all have been keeping kind of a checklist of, you know, some number of people that we think we would like to invite, reach out to and extended invitation to. I know I've got, I've got mine and it's, you know, growing. I know not everybody will say yes, but, you know, people that I trust or people that, some people that I don't see eye to eye on with everything. And that's what I want because I don't necessarily want them to agree with it. I want some pushback and I want people that have a different vision, but I know they care. That's what I, that's what I am focused on. They've, I've had contact with them for one reason or another, sometimes, sometimes multiples because I know they care and I value that input, even if it doesn't necessarily jive with what my own is. Those are the kind of people I think we want.
That's a good point.
Yeah, that's what you want, yeah.
Yes.
Otherwise, we might as well do it ourselves.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve. Perm and Peterson and SEH proposals for strategic planning and comprehensive plan agreement.
I'll second with reservations.
Using the funds.
I have a motion in a second. Further discussion, discussion.
Oh, the last time we discussed this, I voted no on the comprehensive plan. But since this hundred and approximately $25,000 is not coming out of our general fund money, I'm going to vote yes.
There you go. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously. Thank you. Consider the ledge south parking lot improvement. That's you Bill?
Yeah, that's me. If you could just pull up the map, Shauna.
Is it on this, it's the separate one?
Yeah, it's a different.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
Oh.
I know it's probably kind of hard for you guys to see, but you'll notice the drive lanes are in a crosshatch type of fashion there. So this proposal is utilizing the existing contractor, C and L on the site. They gave us a number to subcut the drive lanes out there and put gravel in, utilizing the same methodology with Rockon and Martin Marietta for a cost of about $30,000. I am recommending that we do this next year. We didn't utilize the parking lot this year. And even if we did, it would have been a bonus because we didn't have any rain. Since we've got the wet fall, some of the grass areas are now a mud pit. I can only imagine what it looked like if we got a lot of rain out there. At least this gives the drive lanes someplace to, so you don't have that erosion happening out there. The parking stalls would still stay grass at this point. So I, I'm just going to recommend that this can come out of sales tax funds and we're okay there.
Do you want to also touch on the other proposed funding that could potentially work?
I can do that too.
Of what is?
I was reached out by, by Amazon. They are building a fulfillment center, fulfillment center in St. Cloud. They needed a place to do driver training. Got that call on Tuesday morning last week. They needed a, a place to do drivers' training on Wednesday morning last week. And worked out a temporary agreement. We're still working through the, the final draft. They are willing to pay up to $750 a day to use our east parking lot at the AMP. And they've been out there at least three or four days already. And they, I think they were looking to the end of the month, if I remember right. So there's enough, that funding, just what we raise off of that could offset this even. So it's a, it's a win-win.
And any, anything that, any damage or anything would be paid for by them?
We're working through all that, yeah, so.
Did you say you, you wanted to do this next year?
No.
This year?
Yeah, probably. I need to, if, if the council approves it, then we will let C and L know tomorrow and they'll start working on it. It sounds like tomorrow, well, you can give an update on where we're at with that.
You're not going to dig it up, you're just going to put over the top.
No, we'll subcut out.
You're going to cut out the driveways, the drive lanes.
Just the drive lanes.
Just the drive lane.
Now, this is the existing one that we have out there right now.
Between the AMP and the Public Works.
I do believe that's the new curb cut though, in the left side of the screen.
Yeah, it's, yep, that's, yeah, but it's laid out exactly what, so.
Right here. Is that what you're talking about?
Yep, that's that new curb cut.
All right, council, what's your wishes?
Well, if we get enough money from Amazon, that's even better yet, so I'm going to move to prove.
It's close. I mean, a year probably about, you might be.
Well, give them around a few more days.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve it.
I got a motion. I need a second. You second it, Ken?
I second, yes.
Got a motion.
I made the motion.
Mike made it, Ken second. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, approve bills.
Move to pay the bills.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, passed unanimously. I don't have anything. Shauna?
Just that the coalition conference starts on Thursday of this week. And we've got Vic and Mike that are going to be going. I have a coalitions board meeting on Wednesday, so I'll be there Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of this week, so.
So when is our next council meeting?
Okay, so that is a really good question. Thank you for bringing that up. So I'm trying to accommodate schedules and we have a conflict, we, we need to do a budget work session. I have a conflict that has been, not myself, but a conflict that's come up with Monday, the 29th. I don't have the calendar in front of me. Is that the Monday?
Yes.
Monday, the 29th? Okay. So then my second suggestion was that we would start at, I think I said.
Four o'clock on the 30th.
Yep, and so we, there's a meeting that, I know that I found out that Dave and Rick have with the cop house that goes till 4:30. And then I got word from Keith that he would be available till 5:30 on that day. So I'm, I don't know if it's possible to do anything earlier on Tuesday or in the morning on Tuesday. Or if we could do it Wednesday, the, which would be December 1st, right? And if you need a little bit of time, I can send it out tomorrow and then you can get back to me. You guys are pretty good about getting back to me, but if you know already, then I would know.
Wednesday, December 1st would work for me.
Yeah, I can make that work.
Okay, I need to verify, I need to check with Keith again because I do need him at that.
Like at four o'clock then or something?
That's what I was trying to do is kind of catch the.
Yeah, it works.
How long would that last? Couple hours, three hours?
I don't think it'll be three hours, but Mike, I guess that's up to you guys to decide.
Just asking. I don't know what you got on there.
It's, it's the budget work session.
Oh, the budget.
Yeah, it's the budget work session and the gambling donations that we would go over. I just, the only hesitation I have with Wednesday is, is that it, it's a short period. Well, that's just public hearing on the, on the 6th, so that's probably okay. Yeah. Okay, well, if, if you know that it works, then I'll touch base with Keith. I haven't heard anybody that Wednesday wouldn't work, but I'll double check with everybody else to make sure that still works. We'll kind of go from there. Then our meetings.
Board meeting that night at 6:30 just.
You have what?
Park board at 6:30 that night, so.
Well, I would assume we'd be done by then.
Good reason to be done by then.
Yeah.
So you can come to the park board meeting.
And then we do.
That's not what I was thinking, but.
In December, we have our two meetings that are normal because we have our public hearing for the budget on the 6th. And then the 20th is when we adopt that. And so on the 6th, we'll go through utility rates or, yeah, I think that's right, utility rates, fee schedule. We're also going to be looking at proposals for our refuse. So I had asked if we could start a little bit earlier that day, on the 6th. Like maybe, and I don't know how many we're going to get. So maybe, you know, I just said three, maybe we'll give them a little bit of time to, you know, present. Then you can ask questions. That gives us time to get it still approved ahead of when we want to, so. I think that's it. Lot going on, so we're just trying to not forget something. It is, yeah. So thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, I did. John?
No, sir.
Officer Eve? Not a. What? Nothing? Oh, next name, Paul?
No, nothing.
All right, anybody else?
Is there open to the public comments regarding, regarding the planning committee? So your best info to the public, I would guess, is the quarterly book, newsletter. Putting requests there. Is the city broken up in any different, how many different ways are we broken up?
For voting, there's four wards, but that's all.
Precincts.
Precincts, whatever.
Yeah, but there, there've been a lot of people that have run for office in this council, right, that aren't here. And they obviously have interest in the city because they ran for an office.
Yeah.[1766.69]